...of May the 11th, 2015. In the board members, there is a sheet of minutes from our last meeting. We just entertain the motion for use itself. Correct. Go ahead. Have an motion. We have two minutes. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say it by eye.
Eye.
Foes, same sign. We just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, eye.
Eye.
That meeting is adjourned. We'll call the order now. Our planning commission meeting on Monday, May the 11th, 2015. Again, there are minutes from April 13th meeting under packet emailed to you. Second, any discussion? Corrections? All in favor, say it by eye.
Eye.
Foes, same sign. We may have some people coming through. We get to the parks meeting. If we point that way, don't worry about it. I think they're trying to get in. We apologize. But I don't have anything on our DRC report in front of us. We're going to move on. For applications, which we have no applications tonight. I'm going to open up our public hearing for the planning commission on May the 11th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, it seems like we have a conflict here. And I'll point it out. We've got, the first item of business is this PUD.
I'm rearranging.
Okay.
That's okay. You're okay.
Well, how are you going to rearrange?
Want to do item two first.
Okay.
Because that's longer.
That's also a problem.
We had thought through that. There's no need to do the number two first.
What I was having a problem with is if we approve the PUD, that encroaches on the Boone Road that's already there and which we, you know. Okay. You've done good job.
Well, we're going to start the public hearing with item number two, which is a master street plan revision of Boone Road. We'll hold a public hearing. And we're talking about Boone Road from Reynolds Road to Alcoa Road, changing from a minor arterial street, which is an 80-foot right away, to a collector's street, which is a 60-foot right away. They'll let Dave make the presentation for the city. The way the public hearing will be held is after Dave makes the planning department bid, after he makes his presentation, we'll have the opportunity for commissioners to ask questions. And then we'll allow public comment at podium questions. And then we'll try to have Dave answer those questions and/or Monty, the public works there.
I'd say prefer all of Monty. Let me just spend a couple of minutes trying to explain how we got to this point, why this is on the agenda. You know, as we began to look at the Hart of Bryant plan over the last quarter and a half, and the type of community that we wanted to see in that area, and it was, a big focus was put on having walkable neighborhoods and having neighborhoods that weren't necessarily defined by the automobile. And taking that into account, that thought process, plus as we began to kind of expound on that idea, you have a developer that comes along that has property adjacent to Boone Road. And when it comes down to planning that property, the current status of Boone Road is minor collector. And that car is an 80-foot right away. It's, you begin, kind of, artery. What did I say? But you have a minor arterial and that's an 80-foot right away. And if the idea of the community, at that point, that neighborhood, is to be small, little higher dense, density, walkable, everything's kind of scaled down a little bit, you know, commercial buildings are pushed to the edge of the street, things like that, you begin to kind of question, well, why do we need a minor arterial and an 80-foot right away on this road? And so we begin to think a little further along there about, is that really where we want to go? Well, that happens to be on the master repair plan. So in order to think differently about that, we've got to change the master repair plan. And so I kind of wrote down here in your staff report, or in my staff report to you, some of the thought process going into that. And again, kind of, the first item there, classification as a smaller street, basically a two-lane versus a four-lane, it better promotes that idea, that walkable neighborhood and that smaller feel to a neighborhood in the Hart of Bryant area. Let me just kind of clarify something here. Simply because you, let's say you went ahead and you had an 80-foot right away, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to build ever a four-lane road that allows that opportunity. So once again, as a developer begins to think about development in the Hart of Bryant, you're asking them to put in or dedicate enough right away to fit that larger sized street. And, you know, we've had, I think it's no mystery to anybody, the bond election from a year and a half, two years ago, I think was, the message was sent very clear to, from the folks in and along Boone Road, that they really don't want to see a four-lane road in there. I think that was, that was part of what they were telling us. And then when you think about it again, two-lane road obviously is going to be cheaper to put in, it's going to be cheaper to maintain. Let's say a new road, new two-lane road would be cheaper to, to build, cheaper to maintain than a four-lane over time. But again, you look at the overall cost of that development to do a four-lane road. You've got so many properties, and again, this is no mystery to anybody, probably here in the audience or anywhere you hear, there's an awful lot of houses that sit very, very close to Boone Road right now. And I think if you took the route, making that a, keeping that a minor arterial and requiring an 80-foot right away, we're buying on awful lot of pieces of property. And some of them are very nice pieces of property. And so kind of putting all these ideas together, we begin to talk about the potential of, if you will, re-categorizing Boone Road from an arterial to a collector. The basic difference is a smaller right away, and perhaps in the future, a two-lane road rather than the potential of a four-lane road. And changing that character all around Boone Road totally completely. So that's the presentation. Be happy to let anyone else speak, or if you have questions right now, be happy to answer. I'll put myself behind it.
Any questions? Now, what is the rule of wisdom of payment? Is this going to change?
Collector?
Yes, sir.
The way it is now would be 44-foot payment. We'll change it to the two twelve-foot lanes with bike lanes. There's some discussion whether bike lanes should be a share lane, keep it even smaller, but definitely sidewalk, much more. Why are we taking Boone Road from Alcoa Highway to Reynolds Road?
Well, in some of our discussion, it kind of just worked toward that. One thing I might point out to you, we advertise the entire length in our notice. And in doing that, that means you can make a recommendation on anything lesser than that. If we advertise just, let's say, from Reynolds to Woodland, you couldn't, you couldn't talk about changing it anywhere else other than that one strip. So the advertisement's kind of a catch-all. But I think over, over the recent weeks, I think staff has just come to that, that direction.
But, yeah, I've got a problem with that. And the reason being is that it seems like we're trying to change this from an 80-foot right away, which is wide for four lanes. And yes, we had the bond issue, but I don't think the bond issue was because they didn't want the four lanes, it's because they didn't want to pay the money. I mean, we're talking options. What I'm, what I would like to see is, I'd like to see prepared for the future, which is 20 years, 30 years from now. And right now, there is no way, with the exception of going through Boone Road, to get from Reynolds Road over to Alcoa. Alcoa Road now has the target area. We have a new development going over there on Highway 5, as everyone here knows, that it's going to be a major retail area. And what we need to do, and I say we, the city of Bryant, we've got to be able to move traffic. If we have two lanes of traffic, and I'll further that later on, we have two lanes of traffic, that means one car, one actor and another, and you'll have a parade, which in the parade, the slowest car is always the first one. So everybody behind it, you know, you're going to have, we don't, we're not moving traffic. And also, we have Boone, we have Iron Park. And it's got a tremendous amount of ball fields. We have a major tournament there, then people are trying to come to the tournament. And they can't get there. And what, what I'm saying is, we're not moving traffic. The city of Bryant is, it's traffic unfriendly. Now, we're, we're going along, and I say we, we're going along in, say, bicycle traffic, walking traffic, I mean, that's great. Here in this, the Hart of Bryant, in the dense population, I think we ought to have it. I agree with that. I totally agree with it. But when we get out to the park and going toward Alcoa Road, there's very few people that are going to walk out there, at least bicyclists out there. Yes, I understand that. But what I want to do is I want to move traffic. I have no problem with taking the 60-foot right away all the way out to Woodland, because that's where, when you get to Woodland, you can, very often, you can go to the interstate or you can go to the access road. That's a good, logical place to where you can shorten it down or make it more narrow. But you also move your traffic. You've got traffic coming in from Woodland. It comes there, it can peel off onto the four-lane Alcoa to go to Alcoa Road, or if they want to come back into town. We need to move traffic.
Are we having any pending developments right now? Anything before we make a decision?
Yes. Yes, you do.
On both sides?
No, just on, yeah. Fred, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I follow your logic. And it's, it's an argument that was talked about by staff as well. I see the value in what you're saying. It's just, this is ultimately where we're going to go with it. And it's like, so how we're presenting it.
Keep in mind too, that Sheep Avenue is not going to stop it, but my plan is to take it from Woodland Cricket, which will complete the east-west connection from Reynolds to Springville overpass.
Monty, on that note, we have a bunch of light right away we got there.
It's a 60.
60. But we can put another two lanes in there if we have to, 20 times.
Well, only 60, that plan is just for a 60, it's just for a two-lane. Now, Echo Lake, you're thinking, Echo Lake is, it's actually 130 foot there, but that was because the, the developer, the owners of the property wanted to give us an extra wide right away for the 23 real lives for 90 years. But Sheep Avenue is going to be a major, a major road to move the traffic east and west once we get it complete. We're working that direction. It is one of the, one of the roads that's top of the list for us to try to complete in the near future.
What is Woodland Park, where it connects? What is the question?
Right now, it's just a, it's existing, it's just a 50-foot right.
Big block with stickers. It's a little like, I don't want to.
It would be a 60 if somebody comes in to do web and load it.
I'm assuming the next plan will create a variation of coverage.
And a date on it.
First thing I was told was put the date.
Minor arterial.
Or the.
Listen to mine.
So you're, you're envisioning Boone, you can like shape, sheet, shape. Is that in the future?
Yeah, like Sheep Avenue is pretty much what we.
And envision Boone in the immediate future.
Any other questions today?
So Dave is one of the newer council members. How does this proposal enable traffic flow and make it smaller?
Well, when you talk about traffic flow, there's capacity and then there's speed. The point of this, I think, is to slow people down, but capacity is, is an issue that we still overlook in the address.
You can safely move, you know, 12,000, 15,000 cars a day on a two-lane. We're doing it now in Springville. It's kind of overloaded out there.
We hold Springville up.
We're using Springville. Well, the reason I say, we're getting ready to overlay Springville at 2 foot to the shoulders and it'll make a lot of difference, you know. I don't want to encourage, you know, 55, 60 mile an hour traffic. If you get too wide, that's what happens. It's one of the, the major plans is to shrink things down, is to keep things tense, is to make you feel more compliant so you slow down. Nowhere in the city of Bryant should be driving over 45 mile an hour anymore. Not inside the city of Reynolds or go, including neighborhoods, especially the road like Boone Road where likely to have a lot of foot traffic and bike traffic on it. You know, 35 mile an hour would be kind of a tough speed.
Dave, let me ask you, Monty, with, the, are you just presenting the information or are you recommending we take this back?
This is a recommendation.
Good to be there. I'll open up some public comment, questions, concerns. Feel free to move to the podium and I'll ask you to state your name and address. You have to for the record. And if there's a pad there, write it down. I'm not going to put a huge time limitation. If you have enough people, we'll try to work through it all.
My name is Jamie Steele. I live at 2501 Mills Park Road. Something Fred said was what I had on my mind. The city currently has an 80-foot right away on Boone Road. You don't have to go four-lane road on an 80-foot right away. Build a two-lane road. 15, 20, 30 years from now, who knows what the carrying capacity of one could be. It might be $40,000 cars in a four-wheel. I think when you look at the future, amongst all to who's sitting here 15, 20, 30 years from now, having to go back and obtain access to an 80-foot right away, wouldn't that be necessary, if it's the same way it is? Two-lane road would be good on 80-foot right away. I don't see the necessity for changing it, really. If you think about it, there's really no need to change it. It can stay like it is right now. Or it may improve it to a bit of a way, the carrying more traffic than what it's carrying now. But 15, 20, 30 years from now, think about that. Folks or whoever's sitting here at that time, and you have to come back and probably have an 80-foot right away. And that's going to settle up.
Well, even from, say, Reynolds to Woodland Park, feel that way?
Yes, sir.
The Hart of Bryant?
I feel like that that road has been there for who knows how long, there's since the horse was riding, going up and down it. And it's going to be the major connector, like somebody said, it's going to be a major connector from here to Alcoa. We're going to come down about that.
It's the only way to get from, from Reynolds on this side of town?
Yes.
It's the only road probably through?
And that's, I think that's probably what the city council was putting that for me, this would be an 80-foot right away. Is it is going to be your major connector at some point, because they already have handled that. I'm trying to, Alcoa is the only connector. We have a little bit of help with Sheep Road, but it doesn't go all the way to Alcoa. It goes across, might circle around and pick up the interstate or Highway 5 to go to Alcoa. That's a direct route back to Alcoa. But I would not, if I'm thinking, you know, the way the market is, we'll improve the two-lane road on it and maybe not.
Thank you. The next person that would like to speak, please approach the proposal and name and address.
I'm Curtis Ferguson. I'm here from another business, but I have some interest in this, but I have a question. I don't think there's an 80-foot right away on Boone Road. When we developed Richardson Place, you got 30 feet off the center line to the fences. And when people own the fences, they don't, when the city does not own any of the fences.
No, what we're talking about is the master street plan that dictates, if you were to come in today and.
Yeah, but he indicated that you own 80 feet and you do not.
Right now, it's just on the master street plan.
Yeah, but it could be on the master street plan if there's a large step between being on the master street plan, going up there condemning all those backyards and Richardson Place and gaining 80 feet.
Let me, let me kind of tell you what we'd do to you today if you develop.
Yeah, I know.
You would have to give the other piece of right away you have.
But even now in downtown Bryant, there's not 80 feet there. And that's a, you know, that's a misunderstanding to say that there's 80 feet right away and has 80 foot right away on Boone Road down going. There is none. So you're not giving up any, you're just having gained what you say has said one time you want. And for a developer, 80 foot right away and then you go back and set off another, you know, about 80 feet, that's a killer. And especially for property that you're not going to use, cities don't use. I mean, but my point is this, you do not have 80 feet. You might have said, the master plan was 80 feet, but that's a long way from having 80 feet.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Lena Harding, at 1305 South Richardson Place. I'm one of them whose backyard runs right up to Boone Road. And when we went through this iteration before, the plan would have taken a good portion of our backyard, along with all those people that stretch back. We're kind of at the far, in the far western part of Richardson Place, but all those houses going back toward Reynolds Road. Now, I think as long as you have an 80-foot right away staring them in the face, you've got property owners there that are worried about what's going to happen to them. Do they, do they stay? Do they go? Do they sell? Do they disclose to people that they may be losing half their yard? This is just not an unfair situation. I must, there was nothing very clear about how much you were going to have to go donate, how much money would be paid for. But it's not enough to satisfy homeowners there. I mean, it's just gutting your property. I would like, and I'm assuming that with a 60-foot right away, that you would not need to worry about going into people's backyard, which would be certainly the best for all the neighborhood there. Now, I watch the traffic there on Boone Road all the time. I can see it from my back window. There is not enough right now to worry about. Now, 20 years from now, that may be true, but not all of us are going to be there 20 years from now. We have to worry about our money we have invested in our properties now. We came to Bryant to have craved by Richardson Place, to, to invest our money in what we thought was a good, viable neighborhood. And this thread is hanging over us. Now, in doubt, from what the opposition to that bond levy was for, that you're going to get it through very easily if you leave this 80-foot clearance on there. If you drop it to 60, you might have a support for some kind of bond issue that you want in the future, which I'm sure is not off of the books. So I'm just here to plead the case of these property owners. I don't know how many of them might be aware of this meeting and be here. But this is a real threat, a real problem, that has worried us now for months, if not years. And it isn't fair to strain us long for the duration of our lifetime thinking, well, maybe you're going to lay out this 80-foot thing. There is, there is plenty need to improve Boone Road with a better road, maybe even a center passing lane or pull-off lane, whatever, but, and probably a sidewalk where your children walk to school. But you don't need to be thinking of selling bike trails and all of that, along with the concept of moving lots of traffic over to Alcoa. It's one or the other. Thank you.
And so I would assume you're for the proposal?
Yes, yes. Absolutely.
All right. Anyone else? Please approach the podium. Name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning commission, the zoning commission. My name is Joe Wisher. I live at 856 Dorst Drive, Edna, Arkansas, which is at Salem and in.
Right.
And I would like to talk about Boone Road and the proposal for it being converted from an 80-foot wide, minor arterial to a 60-foot wide collector. Now, this is the minimum standard specifications for the streets of Bryant. Is this what we're going to follow to build that road?
Is that the latest?
It's the one I got off the website today.
Should be the latest one.
Is this what you're going to follow to build that road?
That's, that decision lies with the council, but I do this for him.
And if you call it a road, it's a 60-foot wide. They can change this.
They can change the lane widths and those kind of things, but.
The 60-foot. The 60-foot. The council is going arbitrarily to change this specification.
Well, for the desire, not necessarily the 60-foot wide.
Okay. Here's, here's Phil. Let me explain why I brought that up. From back to curb, the back to curb is 40 foot. You've got 18-inch to curb and a curb. You've got a 6 foot, 6 inch bike lane on both sides. Then you have 24 foot of asphalt. Now, outside the curb, you have a 5-foot buffer that's minimum 3 to 1 slope and a 5-foot sidewalk on both sides. That's how you get your 60-foot, if you build it according to these specifications. Now, when a sidewalk stops, what are you going to do then? It doesn't say anything about that specification. You're going to stop and go, wherever the throwing goes, drop straight down? There ought to be something to address that in your specification, right? Otherwise, whoever builds it is not going to have anything to go by and tell them, when I make a bid for that, if I'm supposed to bid it off these specifications, and that's what you're supposed to bid off of a specification? Unless you're going to rewrite them every time someone bids on building a road.
Typically, where they built them, if it requires retaining them all because of the elevation, retaining all the exposed rail and.
Of course, you might be above the road, but you might be below, below the road. And when you're planning, don't be prejudiced when you're looking at things. It is a mistake. It is a mistake for a vicious park to have one way in, one way out. This park has two ways in and out, and it works very well when you need to have access in and out of the park. Any events you have in that park causes a problem there. So as part of the two lane road issue, it's there and now, have a turn lane into the park. My, my last question would be is, well, maybe it's not my last question, is we're going to park from Boone Road to Boswell classified as 80 foot road or country road or what?
Minor arterial or arterial?
Minor arterial. It doesn't even need specification into the class of the road. It has no curb and gutter, has no back lanes, has a sidewalk on one side, but you don't want the sidewalk. So what we're doing is saying, we've got specifications of Bryant on how we build streets. And then, on a case by case basis, we're arbitrarily saying, we're not going to follow that. The city council can say, you don't have to put curb and gutter on this road, just put the asphalt up to the ends of the road, put a little buffer on the side. I think that is sending the wrong message to people in this community. I think if we make guidelines, then we don't follow the guidelines. And it's going to make a difference in how much taxpayers' dollars get spent with how we build something. But don't not build it well and send the message that we are going to do that.
Are you for or against this proposal?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? We want to vote, Colonel. Are you for or against?
Am I for or against what?
The proposal that we have in front of us.
For the two lane, 60 foot downgrade from an 80 to a 60 foot right of way.
And all we're changing is, is the street plan. We're not going out and saying that we're going to, soon as, if we stay 80, we're going to take 80 feet. We're not taking it. We may never, ever take it. We being the city.
There was one of them. I would hate to see us build a road through a flood plain and leave it in a flood plain, at the very least. And when you get to a bridge, what happens to your specifications? Are you going to all of a sudden let the road narrow at the bridge? Or are you going to widen the bridge like it's supposed to be to meet the criteria of the road?
You've explained the scope of what you want to talk about and what we are talking about, don't you? I don't mean to put you off, but that's not within the scope of what we're looking at right now. What we're looking at now is, is changing our, our street plan from Boone Road being an 80 foot right of way to a 60 foot right of way. We're not, we're not proposing and we're not, we're not planning to take anybody's property. We're not planning on starting to build every liter of the 80. We're not planning on, on building a four lane road. We're talking about right now, changing our street plan so that when developers come in to, to develop new areas, they can look at the street plan and say, oh, we have a 60 foot right of way or an 80 foot right of way. That's all we're looking at right now. We're just looking at changing the street plan, nothing else.
That is not all a developer is going to look at. If he says, what's the elevation of this street going to be? It's going to be 60 foot wide. We're going to leave it what it is now or not? That's going to be part of us.
But that, but Joe, that's not in the scope of what we're looking at.
It has, it is in the scope, doesn't it, Mr. Penfield?
Well, we're talking about the plan and how you develop the road. If, if the city came in today to do that whole road, they would be required to adhere to specifications that you were talking about. We always do, Joe. Now, you know, we have put sidewalks down on roads that were classified as a minor arterial because we had enough money to put a sidewalk in and we didn't have the money to widen it and upgrade it to a minor arterial road. But I don't know of a road we built that we didn't adhere to the same road specifications that he just brought up, correct? So I mean, if we were going to rebuild the road, it would be built to the minimum standards of those specifications. And you would deal with the terrain if you had to put a retaining wall, just like the highway department did on Reynolds Road in certain locations when they did their project. We would do the same thing and have done it before. You have to have those road specifications, and I don't know of a developer, I've been on this commission eight, nine years, and there's several in the audience that can vouch for it, that we have not made those developers adhere to those road specifications. The developers...
That's all I would ask, Jim, to make sure we follow our own, yeah.
So what we're talking about here is a plan that when one of these developers comes in and wants to develop, will we make them give us the 80 foot right of way, which most of the time is just an unused portion until you get to that point? Or do they adhere to a 60 foot right of way? I mean, what's the future of that road going to be 20 years from now, Danny, is it a 60 foot or an 80 foot? And I would ask after your comments, are you for this proposal or against this proposal or a downer?
I do not think it would be fair for me to speak on putting an 80 foot wide of road in that area of town and taking people's property when I live out at Salem community. I want progress for Bryant, but I want to put it all to the best for all the people.
Anyone else like to speak, if voting for or against, or any questions, comments? Just one more time, if anyone else would like to speak at all.
I'd like to just give you a little, just one other thing, what Fred said about people going east and west. You have a six lane interstate, which is very accessible to what's in Reynolds Road, the interstate from Woodland to Alcoa, the back of Bryant. Or you go over to Highway 5, which is now under contract to go through a major four lane road going east and west. And I think people from downtown Bryant, Rich, and place, anywhere else that wants to go to a new shop and get a pro, can get there very easily without going up Boone Road. I think a better select, a better idea would be to go in Highway 5, go down or go interstate. We've got to have a approach going east and west. To keep Boone Road in a neighborhood scope is much better than going through there with an 80 foot, that's ridiculous. Like if you want to go through with an 80 foot right of way and ruin people's lives and won't have a good job, uh, yet. When you want to disclose that if you sell your house, it's a big consideration. Plus the fact, remind you that you don't own 80 feet. That was just, I don't know where we all were when that was changed. We should have been here then, hollering, people own property on Boone Road. We, I'm sure there was a public hearing that established that as a arterial, but we missed the vote not being here then, because I think we could have got it turned around.
So I think that there, there again, and I'll respond to that, is here again, we're talking about the street plan. And when Richardson Place was built, we cannot say that this street plan had an 80 foot right of way.
It didn't, because we gave 32 feet from the center line of Boone Road. That was, that was how much property we gave then to the city.
Richardson Place was developed prior to this street plan.
Exactly. At the same time, they had a rule, you had to give 30, 30 feet from the center line to 32 feet from the center line. That's why those fences are shut back.
You did a 60 foot right of way, you gave 30, made you give 30 from the center line.
Right. And we had, we had to give that to the city and it was a problem.
Okay. So, so then the street plan changed after?
Exactly. That's what we should have been here, huh? We should have.
You and I knew, we're one way here at that time.
I take, I didn't ask you, but you're, you're for this proposal?
Oh, absolutely. This is, but it's the right thing to do.
Any rebuttal, Dave or Tom, I mean, mine?
Well, this, this, this map was created, master street plan in the map, I think we done in 2007. This was when it was passed council and there was a public hearing and a lot of things went on. 2013 was when we redid the minimum standards. The minimum standards, this is how to construct a street. This is the master street plan. Two different elements. So when we're talking about building streets, we go to this. And when we build streets, we build them just like this unless council says, well, no, we don't want bike lanes on the road and we share them, then we can switch that, okay? Those are the kind of things that we can change. The bits and things we can change, if you know what we're going through. Maybe we've been over this and over this and over this several times. We, we make the developers develop their property out, they have to build sidewalks that go nowhere, they just stop. And you'll see that all over town. You'll see, you know, where developments happen, they build their sidewalks to link to their property and then they stop. And that's why you see pieces here and there. I didn't say, hopefully the city has enough money, we'll come here and fill in the spots that probably will never develop. But as they develop, we, that's what this is all about, that's what this is for.
Oh, I make a... How about this one?
Is it possible to make part of Boone Road one way and part of it the other way based on the land that is available? Or do you have to make it the whole, like downtown, when we're trying to redevelop this area, can you make it a 60 foot, go down the road and make it an 80?
That's why we're going to have the 80. They all made a recommendation, we're all in a public hearing on downgrading the whole road from a minor arterial to a collector. We had a discussion, comment, and we're going to have a vote on the recommendation through the applicant of the, of the public hearing, the city. Anything you've heard that would change it to maybe what Jim said, Woodland Park that way of a minor, minor arterial and from Woodland to Reynolds, a collector? Have you requested to go forward the way it is?
Well, the, the request is the way we presented it. However, as I said earlier, we've advertised for that entire length. You can certainly, it's just like a zoning case where you advertise C1, that means you can't change and do C2 after it's done. You can only do C1 and blow. We've advertised the entire length, and so that gives you and/or the council an opportunity to tailor that.
But your request is to stay that?
Yes.
How do we tailor?
We tailor it by just what you're saying and what Fred and you and I talked about last month, is where you could tailor it by saying from Reynolds Road to Woodland Park, it'll be a collector street with a 60 foot right of way from Woodland Park West to Alcoa, it'll be a minor collector with me. Did I do it?
And how we would do that is there would be a motion, a second, a discussion. But although that's, there's a desire of information. Just everyone make a motion, just now.
I tell you what my biggest concern is, that I've lived here for 20 years now and not having the right of ways to grow, and still has stated, has hurt us because it's kind of like Chanel, Chanel would have over walked, because you know, the way it is, and now they're coming back, or wanting to come back to the city of Little Rock to expand Chanel and take up a lot of space that these people are parking on store levels. And I think the same issue you face here is that we go from an 80 to 60, what happens in 20 years that we need that to do. I don't, that's just a tough decision.
But that's why we're planners, we're not, we're not trying, we're not reactionary. We're going to plan.
But sometimes we know we've not had good planning in the past, just like while we came with complete streets because the roads failed, because the structure of the roads was not properly done like we have them now. And hopefully, we're praying that they will not fail based on the new complete street program. Correct, Marty? Is that the purpose of that?
That was the reason we had to redo them. We had a number of submissions that had been built in the last 15 years that almost all of the streets were cut.
Because we had minimums.
Well, that's true, but that's not the scope of what we're doing. You know, it's, it's not the how, it's the where. That's what we're, we're discussing the where, not the how.
So were you open, was you open, what I should talk about was partially being a 60 foot and part of it being an 80 foot or?
If, if you, if you, I said that first. I said at Woodland, going, going to Alcoa, get a 48 and be a, be a 60 foot here in, in the city. That was my whole intention. And Mr. Chairman, this, whenever it gets time to make that motion, I will make that motion.
We're out calling, someone make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion that in this, I have a little more to say this, process in front of us, to make Boone Road a 60 foot right of way, which is a, a collector street from Reynolds Road to Woodland Park Road, make that a collector. And then from Woodland Road to, can I say Alcoa? I guess that's as far as it goes. Make that a minor arterial. And so we have a motion, which will be an 80 foot right of way.
We have a motion to change the request, which everyone should understand, it's Reynolds to Woodland Park, a collector, and from Woodland Park to Alcoa, a minor arterial, which will be 60 and 8. Is there a second? I don't see the second. We'll have discussion, we'll move to the vote. We have a lack of a second to support for the motion, so we're going to move right into our vote all over, okay?
We're moving on.
We're voting on the recommendation.
We're going to go all the way, is higher than that?
Downgrading the entire business. Everybody understood what we're voting on? To downgrade it from a minor arterial, which is an 80 foot right of way, to a collector, which is a 60 foot.
Before our vote, if, if I don't want to get any development, can we table this?
That's my question.
Yeah, I don't really like to table, but I mean, I'm, you know, I'm 16 and I'm...
You would need to make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion, we table this until next month.
I second that. We have a motion and a second to table, is there any discussion?
Yes. If we table this, then we cannot go to the next one.
We can go, it would have to be approved with a contingency. Maybe it's just part of it.
Well, no, pretty, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. I retract that statement because my motion and would have had, this here is a 60, so no, it's okay. It's okay, I'll go along.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Do we have any negative impact on any developers that you tabled?
Yes.
For one month, even if it's being... Is there something we're seeing, or is there something that will wake up to us?
I'm excited, I'm on YouTube.
And, but it depends on how the vote goes, it could have a negative impact on the level of the way.
I agree, I mean, most large developments, I think we would...
Any other discussion?
Yeah, we have 30 days. What's about 30 days going to do? I mean, we've heard, heard the people have spoken.
If we go through a wider four lane at some point, how, how many people is it going to impact from Woodland to Alcoa? And developments that are already there.
We don't know.
But there are some developments between Woodland and Alcoa. There are homes between Woodland and Alcoa. There are big developments, individual homes. But it's, yeah, here we've got wall, wall. What does that do to speed limits too, if you go four lanes? Do speed limits change or will be set up?
The city can set the speed limits, but I would assume it probably will be...
With the vote, faster driving.
Probably 45.
And what we have right now, yeah, we...
Sorry, sorry.
A recommendation and a request from staff to downgrade. We had a motion to table the second. Any other discussion on the motion? All in paper, aye? Right, uh, out of the vote, I'm sorry, to table.
Vote, yes, aye.
Oh, yes, aye. Any opposed? Aye. So motion, three is tabled for the next regularly scheduled meeting. We will move on to our second item of our public hearing, which is item one on your agenda, Allen Schrader made a agreement between Northwest Fourth Street and Boone Road, application requesting to rezone property from R2 single family to PUD, land unit development to residential use. Allen, if you'd like to vote please.
My name is Allen Schrader, and I am looking to develop the property that was just mentioned. And the only reason from our meeting when I was here back in February to now is that we are requesting a PUD for the simple fact of the type of houses that I want to build, or the, really the setbacks on the houses. And after sitting down with the city officials, we're not asking to, we're not adding any more lots. Our plan is, in essence, stayed identical to what we originally talked about, and I had expressed to my neighbors that are in the neighborhood there, that they had questions about, so there'll still be twenty lots. The difference is, is we wanted that deal to have a rear load, garage for this facility, and then possibly a shop building or outbuilding in the rear of the home. In order to do that, we were passed with the setback issues underneath the, at then, at that time, the current zoning requirements, and so outside of what we presented in our last meeting here in front of you guys is just that. I think it's just the setbacks and a few altercations of showing the attention points of the engineering updates that we're working very closely with the city on in order to make this work out with the drainage, and we're being very mindful of that. I know that's a concern. And so our engineer department causes the city to address any of those questions and try to resolve the issues of the public community.
Just for clarification, this is a PUD, but it's going to be a public street, correct?
Correct.
So the street will be built, the street for the city, this, the same road, the right way, city specification, road specifications, and it will be built for the city standards and accepted by the city for maintenance. Correct, Monty? So the PUD's ask mainly for the setbacks, as Allen mentioned, for some rear and side setbacks. They have innovated out, you put tire sheet, the way it's going to do is garage, is still have yard space equivalent of a R1S zoning, correct?
Some of them are ninety-six hundred and some of them are eleven thousand feet, but they're just either side of a ten thousand.
No, I'm talking about as far as your yard space between house to house. You're going to have it real close on one side and then look closer to your side of the garage.
Correct. Five foot on setbacks, but by pushing the house to the ones to that five foot, able to put driveway down, thus giving the spacious distance between the homes that will give the sense of appearance that they're not just right on top of.
And the stormwater drainage detention is going to be probably made same by the PUA?
That is correct. That will be shown on track A, which after discussion in our last meeting, Lance, you had asked about, and if you'll notice, we went and ran that all the way down behind lots one through eight, and encompassed that in that track A engineering, so that that can be maintained without having to gain permission from all of us.
And their ditch yard there?
Yes.
We'll improve that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's already there, so.
The question more is probably there. Just, I've got a word, this is only a, a gemma here, this PUD shows a sixty foot right away. If we would have voted on an eighty foot right away recently, then this makes this...
Yeah, that's, we got it out of sync, and we should have discussed the road first, because that's a component factor for this, not only this preliminary plan, but it's planned.
What if we approved this at sixty foot, and then we come back next month and approve an eighty foot right away? I think we just have to take this along with the other.
And it'd be subject to an eighty foot right away?
I haven't told you about it yet.
I don't have a problem with that, we're, it's been so wet, we haven't started on this project, but I would like to have a direction so I give my engineers time to adjust. If, you know, our D is fifty foot, I understand when you come in and develop something that's, I'll say this, the city officials have been great to work with as far as helpful information and working through this process, and that's been a, been nice to see. And so I don't have a problem backing that up, but it would give us the opportunity to have a option of taking a foot out of every one's lots. And my goal is, is not to crown, I wanted as much space on these lots as possible, but I would appreciate the opportunity to end with that as a contingency, or however.
To approve it, subject to?
Well, it's basically going to be lot eleven, ten?
Well, we'll shorten the distance of the road. My thoughts are, and I have to watch for Northwest Third Street, because I'm bringing that walking trail in, and I still want to make sure that hits on that road, but I'm thinking, in the sense of taking eight inches out of every one of the lots down the street so that we bring it close, but so the side can shorten it up if we have to. It really puts it tight, and we hate it, it means a lot, twelve, you know, it's, it's new, but it's tight.
Well, I think before we even take the public comment, I mean, I make a motion to make this along with the other items. With the city, too, well, I don't think...
Can I say this real quick, on that, is when I stood here in February and talked about what the direction we were trying to go with at that point, it is so parallel to this, it's just that under y'all's, or the advisement of the city that we asked for a PUD, I've asked, this will be the second time I've asked all my neighbors to put out notices to them, and I don't want to inconvenience them anymore, and I appreciate the work that's under the board.
I think we hold a public hearing, I mean, the only thing that's going to change is the right of concept, and he would have to come in with a revised PUD if it changed. We could approve this, subject to that downgrade. If the downgrade doesn't change, he would come in with a revised PUD, just adjust everything further and over.
He'd be, he wouldn't be adjusting the zoning, he'd just have to be adjusting the plan.
And actually, under our, under our guidelines, DRC has the right to make a minor change, and that would just be up to this commission to determine whether that's a minor change or major change, and that's to come back to the public hearing. I think we can state that tonight, DRC would have to go if you make that minor change, it's up to this commission, but I feel like we need to hold a public hearing and move forward. Any other questions, Allen? Okay, we're going to allow a public comment, and we'll have an opportunity, but any, take anyone in the audience who would like to speak. Or against, concerned, questions, state your name and...
I'm John O'Neal, I live in Paulson, Northwest Fourth, which is popular just basic. My concern is to, just asking about the setback off of this, that east side, which will be back of these lots in this development. I know there's an easement downstairs, I'm not sure how, how wide the easement is, but there is an easement there for sewer, and with water as well.
I think there's a twenty foot, correct me if I'm wrong, a twenty foot sewer and water easement, and there's a fifteen foot rear setback, whatever air hose. That's what the flat.
Fifteen setback, fifteen foot setback off of the easement?
No, off of the back property lot. And keep in mind, in our R1S zoning, that's what this is on current, correct?
It's R2.
R2. There's a, I'm sorry, there's a twenty-five foot rear setback, typically.
So one to fifteen, fifteen.
What's the easement, or is that?
No, the easement is encompassed inside, so fifteen foot.
So you can build in the east, you've got, the easement is twenty foot, right? Okay, but you're saying the setback, the building setback, it's fifteen, is what it's supposed to be. Okay, then your building, you're able to build on five foot of the easement.
Well, I see what you're saying, but I mean, I'm just looking at the flat, and we'll let him answer the question.
That's what I'm, I'm asking for.
It's showing a fifteen foot rear setback.
So there nothing could be built in that twenty foot, I mean, probably, probably not. Because that would be what it would be.
So where's that?
Effectively twenty foot setback.
Yeah. We'll note that question and have him address that, and any other issue, concern?
Well, I just want to know how that's going to change, what can be built?
That place, that place not silent, side of not blocked.
I mean, the reason that they have gone to a PUD, there's a style of home they want to build where you pull in the drive and you go into the side low garage.
I understand.
They want to continue that drive straight and have like an outbuilding, which is like a separate detached two-car garage. And in order to get your returning ratio and get into that, there had to be some deals on the setbacks to get all that in, my mind, my head.
That's, I agree.
And so there's just not enough depth in that lot, and these are pretty deep lots, to get that style of house the size these want to build, get your side low garage, get your home, and get your separate detached two-car garage, gang room, whatever it's going to be. So that's the reason for the PUD.
So we're not going to be building on that side, and then make it build closer on the other, on the other lots on the west side, you can't build it closer than twenty foot on the east side.
Yes, well, we'll ask him that question with the easement, clarify that that is a twenty foot easement, and it shows fifteen foot setback when they come back to the public. Okay? Thank you. Any other, anyone else in the audience, please? Any other public comment? Or against, questions? Ask one more time. A lot of people in there. County, I'm going to allow Allen and engineer the votes to come forward and try to address that. Any other questions the commission may have?
Eric Ferguson, I'm the mayor of Allen, and I'm saying, so, to answer a gentleman's question, we did have a rear setback, and some of these setbacks, I don't know that Allen would ever want to build that close, but we sure don't want to come back and ask them the same thing, because it's just a burden to, to, to roll back. Currently, as the plan shows, and we've got some to patch around, the detached garage now, once it goes on these homes, is about twenty-two feet off the east boundary, about twenty-two feet right now. And there is, we did propose people, but no setback, I don't, I don't know, Allen, wherever you would, it's there.
I guess the question is, if there's a twenty foot utility?
Yes, there's a twenty, there's, right now, there's a twenty-two foot utility easement, and this might be the, yeah, let's see, twenty, I think it's twenty foot, and I think our setback, we're building up to about twenty-two feet, so we're about two feet off.
But they show a fifteen foot setback.
Building setback.
Which gets you five feet into the easement.
Twelve, no, we're not twelve, yes, it's there, it's there.
Would it be possible to just match the easement, or you're planning on downgrading the easement?
Well, that's, that's a question that, that, currently, there's water line and sewer line, and it's totally, we're going to abandon the water line, so can we reduce that?
The problem is, is I believe the sewer line is on the inside, water line is on the east side, the water line's on the west side, so.
Water line, so we could reduce it.
No, no, so the water line's on, closer to the property. If it was foot long, then we could do that, but with the sewer line, uh...
It, it showed, you know...
So is it going to, can you pour it and just match that freezing line?
We can, I mean, it's kind of like on the west side, we had a, we had a, a grid and drainage unit, and we measured that fifteen foot, so that setback all over the east.
Let's make it subject to twenty foot, I want to, so you can match the twenty foot?
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
We're at twenty-two now.
What about the setback on the ditch side?
We've already addressed that with, with engineer request, and we've given more from that side.
Yeah, the twenty-five foot, why it's sort of rough. You're, you're considering the track A, you change that to a track, you're considering that as a setback, so on a PUD, you would actually have a zero setback.
Right, yes. But we took that gem in account for having that extra twenty-five feet back there, and it designated that so such that we can maintain or really maintain that.
It just doesn't show one, so.
That's a great question.
Thank you, that's a great question, though.
Any other clarification? So you're willing, I mean, the vote will be subject to the Boone Road right away, but you're willing to make that as we stated, a twenty foot setback in the rear on the east side?
If Monty thinks that that, is that what y'all need there?
Yeah, I like, I agree with everybody, we didn't allow you to build new structure on, you're part of it.
There's the answer.
Okay. Everything, or?
We, we don't think.
I'm terrible, I'm terrible. And door for government, or something like that.
So you're fine hoping everything up being approved?
Subject to the Boone Road right away.
Will that be, will that happen at the next meeting, and I really don't, obviously, yeah, I really, my hands will be tied if that, if our other minutes.
And we'll have, the, the, the public hearing is, all that decision has been tabled for the next regularly scheduled meeting, so it'll be open at that meeting.
Can I ask this, so that I'm clear, will this be approved tonight based on those two, two, us doing the twenty foot and then, and then the Boone Road? Because at that point, obviously, I'm trying to not have to have another public hearing and then have all my neighbors do this one third time.
Well, since we're going to have a subject to, it would be to ask if we vote on this, and the twenty foot, you already have a twenty foot easement that they're not going to abandon, so they're just going to ask me to move that setback to that twenty foot easement to solve that problem. As far as the subject to, and ask for a vote to be conditioned on the Boone Road right away decision at the next regularly scheduled meeting, and DRC being able to make a minor revision for the adjustment if it's going to be enabled. So you want to understand the call, so if it gets downgraded to sixty, this PUD is approved that night, I mean, it's already approved, the subject to goes away, if it gets, maintains an eighty foot width, then you're giving DRC permission to make a change to this PUD, only to shift everything to fit into the eighty foot. Clear?
But it won't be another public hearing?
If you're giving DRC approval to make that decision of the final class based on him moving everything that they give.
Do you want to take a motion to approve this?
No, we're going to vote all over, I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're talking about. And it's, it's a subject to that hearing that we tabled, and you're also giving DRC approval to adjust if that hearing turns down the staff information, okay? Go call them.
Long?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
and Field?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to our old business, we have none, our new, I'm sorry, we will close our public hearing for May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, and we're going to move on to our planning commission agenda, which under old business, we have none, our new business, we have Jim Hastings, Creek's side addition, page one, we have a concept. We have a concept plan first approved, and, um, Mr. Hastings can approach the podium and give a little, little background on what we're doing here, and talk a strictly the concept plan back down.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you guys for letting us bring this before you. I'm Jim Hastings of Diamond Development, one of the owners. Mike Lake is the other owner of Diamond Development, head of engineering. We've been in development business for over eighteen years, primarily in the Plaskey County area. This is one of our first developments in Slane County, and we're happy to be here. We're both Slane County residents, so Mike's had a couple of boys graduate from Bryan High School, I've got a senior this year, and a sophomore, so we're very invested in it. Like a lot of folks that live here, we've done a lot of our business in the Plaskey County area, so we're looking forward to getting this project going here. We purchased this property back around two thousand, forward to two thousand and five, had a preliminary plot, and we're, we're working on that with about three hundred and something lots in this particular area. As you guys know, what happened in two thousand and five, the economy and the housing sector and everything started to deteriorate, and we stopped our work on it at that time, thinking that we'd probably just table this for a, for a year or so, till the economy picked back up. And during that time, you guys all know that this has drawn out for another eight or ten years, so we've worked on some other lots in other areas and stuff that we had in Plaskey County, and we've just recently come back in the last six, eight months, ten months, and started working on this project again. In our marketing efforts and our research, we felt like, for our efforts, the original plan of the three hundred and something lots was no longer viable. Seemed that Slane County, and that, I'm including Bryan, Benton, some of the box houses, seemed to have, in our minds, a significant number of entry-level homes, which is what we were going to put in that area originally, both new and existing. And we were trying to determine what to do with this property, since things had changed in the eight or nine years since we originally purchased it. And I'd like to take credit for it, but I can't. Mike actually came up with the idea of making some larger estate-sized lots and lowering our density. So, from a concept standpoint, we took our density down about sixty-six percent. We went from a concept of about three hundred and something lots, down to a concept of a, originally, of until, you know, a few weeks ago, we were up to a hundred lots, we're down, now we're at ninety-nine lots, and I'll explain that a little bit. But our, our research, we were, and our marketing, we were down to look for something like a niche that, that Bryan community didn't have. And one of the things that, that we liked, and we thought would be really attractive to the Bryan area, is to have a little bit of elbow room. Let's have some larger lots where you've got the opportunity, have a little more elbow room, stagger your houses back and forth, and also maybe have a shop, or, or a gazebo, or pool, or whatever you want. Let's have some room in the back yards without having to spend your whole weekend mowing grass, like you would on a three-acre or a five-acre tract or something that you have to go outside to count and do it. So, the project that I'm asking you to support, or the concept that I'm asking you to support, is larger lots, less density, in an area off of Midland Road, that's sort of across from the Bryan soccer park, where the configuration, not only the size of the lot, but the configuration of the lot, I think is very important. Most of our lots are, all of our lots, almost all are a hundred-foot wide. The first project of roads, you go in on Creek Side Zone, lots in there that are roughly a hundred by two hundred and twenty-foot deep, hundred-foot wide, two hundred and twenty feet deep. And if you think about that, a lot of the lots that you look in here, typical lots, will be anywhere from sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, something like that, a hundred twenty-five, thirty, whatever it takes to get to the seven hundred square feet, if you're trying as a developer to maximize your area. We're about, our, our smaller lots are about three times that size in total square foot. Once we get to creek water drive, then we're going to be hundred-foot wide by a little over three hundred fifty. So we're even increase that even a little bit more as we go into there. Our topography and everything, and our land configuration allows us to get a little bit deeper lots than that. And we feel like that's a good concept and a good size, where you can, you can have a, you can have your house, your driveway, pond if you want it, gazebo, shop, and we're, have a strong build assurance, where it's not commercial activity, we're not looking for anything like that, we want a real, real field residential neighborhood right in the heart of the city. So that's, that's our concept.
So we're, we're going down rate from, in the area you're actually presenting the concept of two hundred and thirty-seven, it's on R1.
It's just R1.
I mean, he can do. Seventy-two hundred square foot lots, a whole house.
He do like it?
Any questions of Jim on this concept?
Jim, what, what do you perceive as the size of home that would be open there?
I do, our build assurance that we provided to, to staff, has a two hundred square foot minimum for a single story, twenty-four hundred square foot per feet, two-car garage required.
And then you run load, or is there any, no requirement there?
No requirement there, we're leaving it up to the homeowners to decide how they want to get in and have their garage. There's a lot that's going to be, also, with the overall look up there, everything that's going to be the architectural control, to be, be approved. But it's the overall concept of what you want to do on your piece of property. Do you want to side-load the garage and let the driveway continue on, or do you have a job or a pool, or something, something like that around back? Or do you want it to front-load it? Just have a lot of options there.
Any other questions?
Well, we make, aware that the, part of this was in the county, in the handfield approval, is they were releasing to the city.
Yeah, he's, uh, the developer has requested a public hearing and had, it's been advertised, and the county is expected to release it from the county in a couple of weeks.
Or should the city approve the Flimbury plan?
Now, there's, that's right, there's a, there's a, it's actually in a distance of, before the county released this to the city of Bryan, their jurisdiction, we have to approve the preliminary. Okay, so once we approve the preliminary plan, they pay the breach, release the, the actual property from their jurisdiction, then he'll do a voluntary annexation of that area. So tonight's approval of the concept plan and the preliminary plan will be subject to that release and annexation of the city.
That property's exactly down that dolphine, that hitch mid?
It's not the whole side, but-
Just that, there's no blocks there.
We have a whole, a whole of a hundred and twenty something acres right there, and the side that, that is annexed into the city of Bryan, and we have about twelve, thirteen acres that we are annexing into the city of Bryan. That was purchased later than the original purchase, in order to get access straight off the Boone Road.
And the alternative would do a pre-annexation agreement, but that pre-annexation agreement would have to go through a year in city council, and for a month, just use your perfect section of the city's activities, so, required. Good? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Burgess?
Yes.
Inbeal?
Yes.
Berwin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
For your, Jim, we have out four on new business, it'll be Jim Hastings Creek Side Edition Phase One, the preliminary plan, which is the last document in the OC packet, sorry, second to the last page. How many lots are in that, Jim?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven in phase one. Any questions? We'll have a roll call vote again, it's subject to the Slane County releasing it from their jurisdiction, and Jim doing a voluntary annexation of this property. Roll call vote.
Inbeal?
Yes.
Berwin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just, just one more comment before I leave, I would like to say, Mike and I have developed quite a bit of profit of lots and stuff in the Plaskey County area, in fact, and we've been a part of that, and supporting the Bryan staff, and we have a very good experience with Bryan staff, and with the overall help of the DRC, and getting some of the ground that we got to do, and that was a constant term around, has, has Bryan, has people from Bryan, uh, have a good experience.
Thank you.
I'd like to add a, a new, a new business item, please. So, I'd like to add to the item to the agenda. The item number five, it's for our purchasing medical office building, located between LA Five and National Furniture, on East Side Marketplace, have new question site plan approval, it's on this community commercial.
And we have a motion to add an item to the agenda. You're a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Okay, Mr. Ferguson, just to tell me the-
Thank you, I'm there representing Barr, who is a builder, and we have an interest in this project, and it's been long, ongoing deal for a good while, and circumstances allow, it's kind of built up on us here, we ask for this favorable consideration, appreciate you doing it. In fact, when I get through here tonight, I hope I can give the same congratulations to this body that Jim Hastings did.
You just said that.
Rather than leave here, he paid me, he paid me for the first part.
Right, we, uh, the site plan has been approved by DRC and recommended tonight. It does fit all the criteria. This would be being approved, subject to drainage being approved by the less, uh, priser city engineer. This, the drainage, just from the commission's information, it's more than just this one facility, it involves enlarging pond, and, uh, there's a subcontractor doing the study right now, so it will be in place, but the real COs will have to place some of this in. Also, this is just a site plan approval, Greg, Ho, Cody, Portland, will have to approve the construction plans, and then the permanent with the issue. Any other questions, Curtis or the process?
That must have, maybe, I mean, I think today, but it was, it was like, we got it down, a little, we'll keep it down, but over there in that construction process, but I gotta tell you, it came up four feet of wood. It was down last week, you might look at it.
It's got a different concept on it, because after eight or nine inches of rain, it still doesn't, there's still a lot of pretty wood left.
Yeah, I looked at it, it looked like-
They'll take it over down again, using a seven, five, or a twelve inch, during this construction process, and then of course, after that's over, it runs square, you know, runs square, when you're not building something. But, we're, we do a good job.
I just, I was just thinking, I looked at it, I guess seven years old, maybe seven, I mean, it's down quite a bit, you know, I thought, well, maybe it's not now.
Or the total acreage of this?
Well, the drainage study, now, this is, this has had, gone through a drainage study, and we've all been kind of conscious that it was habitable for the area, and dealing with less, we're going back and getting about an additional thirty-five acres within that, in addition to what it's proved for now, so that we can build that structure to accommodate finished out property on that. Instead of coming back every time with less, you know, we're going to build it up, build the structure to handle the development that can go on, all that property, and we have to go with it.
Probably behind the wall.
Yeah.
All right, so we understand the roll call vote will be there for the site plan, subject to that price of approval of the drainage. Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Berwin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Long?
Yes, one, two, three votes.
Burgess?
Yeah.
I abstain from the word, it's my-
All right, good. Now, Jim, I want to join you. If you want to, you guys can give.
There would be one more motion.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.